Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting on February 19th at 7:00 PM. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us.
Our first announcement is the top dog. The Carols want it with their dog. I don't know what kind of dog it is.
It's a lab mix.
It's a lab mix.
He's very shy.
Going to grant them a certificate. And if we could stand one more time for a moment of silence for a recent passing of Dan Gilmore, a member of Town Conservation Commission. Our condolences extended to the family and friends. Thank you to our Highway Department, snowpawing contractors, and our Public Safety Emergency Manager and Offices for all the great job done during the recent winter storm. The selectmen will meet jointly with the Finance Committee tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM. This meeting is open to everyone. Please attend the budget meeting with any questions or concerns regarding the town budget. This is school vacation week. Children are not in school. Please take extra caution on the roadways. Department annual town reports were due to Executive Secretary by last Thursday. If you haven't submitted your report, please do so as soon as possible. That's it for announcements. Approval of the minutes and warrants? Do we have warrants?
No warrants this evening. The first minutes are January 22nd at 6 o'clock. Selectmen Poohlin, Wing, and Laura present.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of January 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, we will hold the next for the chairman and Mr. Baker. Those are the February 4th. We'll table till the next meeting.
No warrants?
No warrants this evening.
Finance Committee.
Joe Posa, Finance Committee. I just have two announcements and a piece of news that sequestration likely won't be overturned. So we can look for issues perhaps in the second half of the fiscal year. But that's an aside. I followed up. About five weeks ago, I sent out, I reached out to Dudley as a result of Helen asking me to respond to a survey being conducted by the Select Board of Dudley relative to the capping of minimum local contribution to schools at 2.5 percent. I followed up this weekend by contacting the town administrator, Peter Jankowski of Dudley, and he was very good to respond to giving an update. And basically, the Select Board at Dudley have met with Senator Moore and their representative, Representative Durant, and they're progressing or going forward with an initiative to legislate the capping of minimum contribution to 2.5 percent. And Mr. Jankowski is recommending that our Select Board be in contact Senator Moore's office for the further details on that legislation, proposed initiative in legislation. He told me that Senator Moore was looking for support from other municipalities and community on that matter. So it looks like that's moving forward. You know, and the downside of all of this is that I also had, I was in touch with Jerry Finn, and I publicly want to acknowledge what a great job he's doing representing Millville on the Blackstone Valley School Committee. The guy is dedicated, and he really has Millville's best interest at heart, which he was elected to do. But the thing is, is that as an example, BVT's cost per student assessment this coming year has gone to go up 8.2 percent. The state had mandated that it could go up to 10.7 percent, and Dr. Fitzpatrick, you know, held it down to 8.2 percent. So I'm sure Jerry lobbied for that. But again, you know, our levy's capped at 2.5 percent, and ed costs are just getting out of sight, and the state appears to be just pushing down more and more on the local communities. So it's making it tough far as... And basically, these latest increases were at the governance prerogatives. He, I forget the terminology, but he had it within his purview to, you know, increase the burden on the local communities, and they did. They went to 10.7 percent. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. BVT School Committee is going to have the budget meetings on March 7th at the school library, and I plan to attend that, and Jerry's asking that, you know, we get some representation from town government to be present at that meeting as well. I said that it'd be March 7th. I think it starts early. It's like at 5:00 in the afternoon at the library. That's all I have for the moment. Except, Jerry, if you're watching, thank you for your interest and dedication to Millville. Thanks.
Thank you.
Capital Planning Committee? Nobody here?
Are you speaking for Capitol?
The Zoning Board of Appeals?
Tom Mulvey with the Zoning Board of Appeals. Here, I believe, to present the fiscal year 2014 budget. I believe that had not gotten to your hands as of yet. What I've prepared is the overview of the '13 budget, the level funding budget for 2014, and then a 10 percent reduction budget for 2014. We don't have a big budget. It's $695 a year. Pays for the salaries more than it does for all of our expenses, postage as such. But we do have some room in there if we need to cut some of that budget down by 10 percent. We can drop $70 on the budget and get us down to $625 mostly through supplies and expenses that are probably not needed for the 2014 year. The second page that I have on there is, what I had done is done a research of the local towns in the area, what their fees are for zoning board variances, extensions, and appeals to decisions, and found that we seem to be rather low in our fee schedule. I think it's probably time that we should probably raise the fee for zoning board variance or extension or decision. I'm not sure of that process and getting that fee raised, if that's a warrant or meeting or if it's just a vote by the selectmen. As you can see, various towns are probably twice what we're charging, and I think that would probably help offset the zoning board budget by raising the fees on that. Obviously, we meet by necessity. This past year, we've only had one variance that has come forth. So in some years, we might have one or two, and other years, we might have none, so...
Is it mostly residents or contractors?
It's residents. For the most part, it's residents. For the most part, it's residents, and, you know, with the economy...
It's just another burden on the residents.
Right. But in that particular point, when you're coming for variance to the board, you're looking to supersede any of the town bylaws and zoning bylaws that people have put in place. So, you know, and the fee permitting purpose of it is, you really want to make sure you're going forward with what you're asking the board to do.
Well, I can attest that it was $150, 10 years ago.
10 years ago. So that has not even increased by the cost.
So do we have to go to the annual town?
I have to look into that.
It's something to, just something to consider for the board to look at. You know, I know it's another burden on it, but we want to just make sure that, you know, it's a small budget, it's a small board, that, you know, the costs are met if they need to be met.
It's a service. Let the people vote on it in a meeting. That's what I say. And you would know better than we would.
Yes.
You know the work that's involved.
Yeah.
Would you want to raise it to?
I suggested raising it to 300. That seems to be the means across most of the local towns. Uxbridge, Blackstone, they're both 300. Mened, Milford, Northbridge, you're at 250. They're a little bit lower. But, you know, I would suggest to go rate with our neighbors.
You're at 150 right now. Go from 150 to 300. It's a hell of a jump.
It is.
So why don't you bring it down a little? I mean, how do you justify making a jump that quick, that high? Don't you think you ought to do it in a little bit of like steps?
We could.
Be a little bit more easier on the taxpayers' wallet?
It could be.
You know, when people turn around and they look at this and say, gee, it's 150, we went from 150 to 300. What happened to the happy medium? There is none. You just went bang. I personally, I don't think it's right. I think we should cut it down a little, make it easier on the taxpayer than just do one big giant bite, personally.
With that 150, are you doing all the mailings?
That's correct. Correct, the mailings are within that 150 budget. So that's part of the postage in the budget. What's not in that part of the budget is what they pay the assessor.
The assessor's time to create the list.
And also the fee for running the legal notice. That is not inside.
And then the fees for the newspapers?
That's correct. It's not inside that 150.
I think, I'd like to see, on average, what does the legal fees cost? I'm not saying...
60.
And how does, how many, once or twice?
That comes out of the town hall advertising, usually.
Is it done once or twice?
It's just once.
Just one?
No, it's twice. It is twice.
So there's 120, now you're posted. So essentially, the town's person who's taking 150 is just paying for the process. The town's not making any money on this currently.
Correct.
Yeah, but if you raise it to 2.25 from 150, then the town's going to make a little money on it. But to go to 300, one shot, that's an awful big bite.
Do you know, Tom, some of the towns, I think, charge the variance fee in addition to, they also have to pay the advertising and they have to pay the postage.
That is correct. Normally, the other towns are actually paying that one fee, and then all those are in addition.
On top of.
The resident is paying that out of pocket on top of that fee.
So why don't we just boost it up to like the next lowest, 250?
Well, let me, if the board wouldn't mind, I'd rather look into it to see what the proper process is.
Okay.
And then I can get back to you.
And I think we can also look at, yes, we don't want to burden anyone that fast and make it unreachable for anyone to look for a variance or an appeal to the decision.
But you really, I mean, like you said, you had what, one last year?
Correct. Well, so far in 2013.
So it's not like you're, do you know what I mean? It's not like you're hitting, you know, people coming in for dog licenses and raising it. You're hitting a very, just handful of people each year with this increase. It's not affecting a lot. I personally think that there's a lot of time and effort put in to gather all of this, and that this fee shouldn't just be what it costs to legally post and mail, but should incur the time and effort of our employees.
Yeah, but going from 150 to 300 is stiff. I'm sorry. That's...
Like Helen said, she'll look into it and...
We'll get back.
We'll let you know what she came up with.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Site location? I'll stand up here this time. Okay. Last, hello again. And last time that I was with you, we were talking about possibly locating the playground in front of this school building, and that has been, we can no longer try for that. The fire department did decide that we couldn't do it because they need that access for the fire equipment if something should happen up there. So we went back to the drawing board, and there is other members looking at other sites, but I wanted to go ahead, at least propose this one site that I would like to look into to gather close to what we might be able to develop it before, and to see if this is something that you would consider allowing us to look at. I put in marker, I put in marker where we're looking at right now. We like to consider this spot, one, because the chief, when he went up there, we took the fire truck up to the school, and we tried to do the fire truck around the existing basketball courts that you can see on the top behind the school. You can see those basketball courts layout. The fire truck needs that whole entire area in order to turn around and to have access. So what you're looking at, if you've been up to the school, there is this access road that goes to the water tower. While the chief was up there, he looked at this and he said, "Why don't you go to the left of this road, this access road?" So we're like, okay, sounds like a good plan. We'll go down to the Board of Selectmen and see whether or not this might be something that we can consider, going to the left of here. I went there and I placed a 64 by 120-foot playground area in that location, but it's right up against a rock wall, which I haven't fully determined, but I think that's property line, to the property behind the school. So I have to go and find out a little bit more information with the building inspector to see how close to that rock wall we might be able to come. I do know that the property behind the school, though, is town property. It's called the King's Property. If you Google it, it's called the King's Property. It was donated to the town, I believe, in 19...
91.
Yeah, I want to say 1991.
91, it was accepted at town meeting.
There you go.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm not quite sure whether or not, we haven't found out if there's any restrictions on possibly using this land.
There isn't.
One of the nice things that we could do, if it's possible, we could change the location of the playground, but where we're looking at, it looks like there's not a lot of ledge. It's kind of flat. But you could expand this in the future, depending on how close to the rock wall you want to go, because I think that rock wall is property line. But if you're not afraid of going over onto the King's Property, you could maybe deed a little bit over to this part of the school town land and expand a playground in the future if you want.
The King's Property is purchased from the town of Millville, but in years past, Eagle Scout actually did his project there. So there was like walkways and a bridge and a, I'm trying to think of the others. Is it still up there, Joe?
Poor shape.
Poor shape, but it's there. There was markers, and there was, it was a project that was done on that property. So in the past, there has been things done on that property without issue, so...
So I'm not quite sure. All I'm looking for tonight is basically permission from you guys to investigate this track of land to see whether or not we might be able to put the playground there.
It's fine with us.
I think in the past, and the last time, we, you know, pretty much in support of your efforts.
It's coming close to that property. I didn't know. If you want a bigger playground, is it possible for us to go onto that property and remove part of that stone wall in order to put in a bigger playground?
Go to the assessors and see if they have a map.
I have a map.
You went to assessors already?
I went, yeah, I actually did, through, online, yes.
But it's all, it's all owned by the town. They're just different deeds.
Yes, they're different deeds. That's what it is.
But it's all owned by the town.
Would you like to see the map from the assessor? I got it.
Please.
Okay.
If we could leave it on the school property, it'd be best.
It would be best.
Yeah, by, rather than taking down a wall.
Okay. Well, one thing is if we do take down that rock wall, we were thinking maybe capping the ends of the rock wall and doing it really nice if we have to touch the rock wall, maybe do a cap, you know, like a little tower or something.
Yeah, as long as the boundary's still there. It's like a marker.
Right. Where we're looking at over in this spot, one of the concerns would be, and I would end up going onto the King's Property, is maybe to take down a few trees, so that way the trees aren't overhanging the playground, so that way they don't come down during a storm and crash the playground. Is that something that we might be able to do, is to cut down those trees, a few of them? It's pretty sparse.
You're going to have to. Like, what size trees are they?
Well, we have to cut down trees where we're going anyways. They're probably about 50 feet or so.
When it comes down to that, we could probably do a site visit.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, definitely do a site visit, and I can bring all the pictures.
Once you get all your, once you get everything in a row, ready, then come back and let us know, and we'll make a date for a site visit and move forward.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
We're behind you.
Huh?
We're behind you.
I know.
Just need to get it all finalized.
We're looking forward. Do you want to keep those or do you want me to?
If you don't mind, yes, I will help with that in the file. Thank you. Thank you.
Wish you the best. Appointment and resignation.
First public form.
First public form. First public form. Nobody? Appointments and resignations? I don't have that in my file. We have Tom Who, who resigned from the Council on Aging, February 13, 2013. Get a motion to accept his resignation.
Second?
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can we get him a letter and thank him for his service?
Yeah.
Serving.
We got somebody that wants to be appointed to the, appointed to the board of committees.
Isn't that the, is that the alternate? Or, no, it's Kevin.
This would be to fill, this would be to fill Mr. Who's seat, the vacancy that he leaves.
Kevin Blanchard.
Yep.
Council on Aging. Motion acceptors?
I think we have to make a...
For June 30th, 2014.
I make a motion to appoint Kevin Blanchard to the Council on Aging through June 30th, 2014.
Second?
To fill an unexpired term?
Mm-hmm.
And second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Report, Executive Secretary report.
Yep, just a few things this evening, just to let the board know, we did receive the insurance check for $1,900 for the stolen bollards from 21 Hope Street. The chief has recommended putting something there, not to the extent of what was there, but perhaps some flexible plastic bollards, and we're working with the highway surveyor on that, so I will get back to you.
Was that in conjunction with the current resident or new resident?
I don't even think he's spoken with the resident, but the chief feels that something should be there just to alert people that it is an easement and they shouldn't be driving down there.
Is this one going to be a little bit more user-friendly?
We hope so. We hope so.
Chief talked to him?
Not as yet, no. Just walked in. Just a reminder that annual reports from the departments were due last week. There's still quite a few I haven't received, so I'm hopeful that we'll get most of those in so we can start putting the book together. Reminder that we do have a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow evening at 6:30 to start reviewing budgets with the Finance Committee. The vendor has completed the installation of the upgrade to the water filtration system that was done today up at the school. Everything went well with that installation, so we're hoping that this is now phase one of a potential three-phase project. We're hoping that phase one is it, but that has been completed.
Does this have to be checked by the DEP?
DEP's already approved it. Yes, they're on board with this, absolutely. The last thing, I did put in your mailboxes information from the Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, Legal Division, with respect to the request that the Veterans' Agent had had with respect to putting a mailer in with the real estate bills. And in a nutshell, if you look at that, he's, you can put a flyer in with the real estate bills, but there are really some specific parameters that the town has to stay within. So I just give you that for your information.
Does this open the door for other?
In a nutshell, we really can't be requesting donations or seeking any type of funding from the taxpayers. We can put an informational flyer in with the real estate bills, providing it doesn't increase the cost of postage, and providing that it's simply informational. You can let them know that we've created a fund, period, and that's it. And another example is, the Board of Health has asked if they could put a flyer in the next mailing, just letting people know that we have a Mercury, you know, program going on. Informational, period, that's it. So things like that we can do.
Is the Board of Health, is an ally supposed to send something out? Could they add it to allies? Because I haven't received anything from ally.
I'm just told by the treasurer that the Board of Health asked her if she could, if she could put that in the next mailing about the Mercury Recovery Program, so I don't know the situation with ally. So that's, you know, when you have a chance, read over that. That gives you a better idea of what is acceptable and not acceptable as far as being sent in with the real estate bills. And then I'll just mention that before this meeting started this evening, for those people watching at home, the selectmen did vote to call for a special town meeting on Monday, March 11th at 6:30, and this will be to address only one article, which has to do with the debt exclusion for the high school roof. And if anybody would like any additional information, they can certainly feel free to email me or contact me. I'm happy to get that to you. And that's it.
Okay, old business. Okay, old business. The DCR bikeway.
Yes, if you recall, we...the board visited this at one of the last meetings and asked a few questions. He wanted a little more information on it. I asked the police chief, or I should say, the chief of police and fire to look into this for me, since it was primarily his two departments that were affected. He did speak with DCR, and what they told him was they need nothing from Millville. The land is owned by P&amp;W, so the easements, they're dealing directly with P&amp;W. They are looking to use the access road to travel on to get to the underneath of the railroad bridge, but that's all they're looking to do, is use the access road. They will not be blocking it, obstructing it, or interfering with it in any way, and they will take care of and handle their own security and any problems that may arise. So, it should not affect the town in any way. The chief tells me he does not have any issues with it. So, I don't know if there's any further information you'd like before you...
No.
Authorize this.
I'm good. Do we need to make a...was there a motion?
Yep. It's very specific. There's a certificate of announcement that needs to be read, as well as the waiver of 120-day notice. So, I've got Roland's name plugged in here, but if you want to just plug your own name in.
Should I give it to the girl who had a speech impediment? All right. Where am I? Nope, nope. Oh, this is by the chair, yes?
Yep, the board can authorize.
Oh.
Mr. Who, if you want to plug his name in there, I can wipe that out.
To authorize Charlie Poole, Vice Chairman. For, and on behalf of the Millville Board of Selectmen hereby certify that a regularly scheduled board meeting held on February 19, 2013, an announcement was made regarding the Commonwealth's interest in purchasing for conservation and recreation purposes, permanent easement and land location in the town of Millville, now informally used as the railroad corridor in lying adjacent to the Blackstone River. The subject's land is shown on the locust map marked Exhibit A, appended there, too.
Any discussion?
Is that all you needed, Helen?
Yes, and that is for that one, and then this is the second one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote to sign the waiver of a 120-day notice. It reads as, pursuant to Massachusetts regulations regarding acquisition of land or interest in land for the conservation of the Commonwealth's natural resources, in particular 301 CMR 51.081B, Charlie Poole, Vice Chairman, for on behalf of the Board of Selectmen hereby certify that a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen on February 19, 2013, voted to waive the 120-day notice period required by said section 51.08, and approved the acquisition of permanent and temporary construction easements by the Department of Conservation and Recreation and land located as shown as the Exhibit A within a shorter time period than the provision set in Section 51.08.
A second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's it for old business? New business? Class II license?
Yes, we have one additional Class II license that the board did not vote in December. This is for Millville Motors on Main Street. This would be license number three. The only thing we are missing on this is a business certificate, which is a requirement, and it's technically just a formality. So, in your vote, I would just ask that the board approve this contingent upon the applicant's receipt of a business certificate, and that is through the town clerk's office, so the board and I really have no control over that. So, I hate to delay, you know, the applicant's license for that reason. He's been very patient with us, and I appreciate that. But everything else is in order. All the inspections have been done. The fee has been paid. So, he's really good to go.
Make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the...to...I can't even think. To issue the Class II license for Millville Motors pending that their business certificate is in place.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And you'll be signing in two places, on the license and the application.
Final public form? Anyone like to speak?
Thank you for putting up with my children.
What children?
I know.
Happy children. Happy children. Our next regular meeting will be Monday, March 4, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. at the Oneville Municipal Center. Motion adjourned.
I'm moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.